Господь, Самый Благословенный, Самый Миротворящий! Спасибо, что пришли на эту особенную форуму по Иерусалиму. Я хотел бы подчеркнуть, что это форум, а не лекция. Наши панели предоставит перспективы, надеюсь, за 7-10 минут.
Да. Хорошего luck!
Нет проблем.
Мы сегодня дружелюбны, поэтому дадим вам несколько дополнительных минут. Потом мы проведем дискуссию, а затем мы перейдем к комментам. Но я бы очень побужден всех здесь думать о новой идее, о предложении для развития. Потому что цель этого форума — это навести нашу дорогу к развитию, а не просто переседливаться на проблемах и чувствовать, что слишком тяжело и их заставляет. Как мы можем видеть вперед, как выход? И для вопроса Иерусалима, конечно, для всех трех абрамических верностей — ислама, иудаизма и христианства — Иерусалим играет важную роль. И когда мы начнем говорить, что религия не имеет такой же легитимности для Иерусалима, как другая религия, мы нарушаем свою собственную религию. И мы должны сохранять это религиозное принципе во всем, что мы делаем. Однако, конечно, Иерусалим был воспринято как золото в регионе, где occupiers хотели его занять и использовать для их политического благополучия, независимо от того, были ли это кр薬исты или британцы или даже цзинистский движок, который считал, что даже если это был секулярный движок, смотреть на Иерусалим с его религиозным символизм было важно для цзинистского движения. Поэтому мы должны помнить все это, когда мы будем справляться с политическим ковбом в Мировом Востоке. И также интересно, что президент и его администрация, Дональд Трамп, я не уверен, насколько они заботятся о правах иудов и взаимодействиях с антисемитизмом, поскольку они очень близки к alt-right и мионацистам и ККК. Это больше относится, и есть статья в CNN, которую мы хотим показать вам всем, к обману и служению интересам евангеликов, которые верят в идею dispensational millennialism. Миллениализм! Это так трудно понять. Но идея — создать армию, чтобы Иисус мог вернуться. И вся эта notion о игре в жизни людей из-за этой фантазии, если вы хотите, это ужасная фантазия, если вы подумаете об этом, от одного группы христиан, это действительно стыдно, considering, что мы в 21-й веке, когда мы заявляем, что мы частью освещения, частью национального и международного pluralismo, частью прав человека и демократии, но потом, когда дело доходит до одной из самых важных вопросов в американской политике, мы переходим к этому типу идеологического экстремизма. И на этом я думаю, многие из вас знают, но важно повторить, что Соединенные Штаты потратили триллионы долларов на военное использование, на внешнюю помощь и стоимость жизни, если вы подумаете о жизни, которое потеряли среди палестинцев, иералийцев, арабов во всем регионе. Когда Египет считался threat, он был neutralized, и посмотрите, что произошло с Египтом. И тогда Ирак считался threat, и посмотрите, что произошло с Ираком. И теперь они делают это, как если Иран был threat, как если это единственная проблема, о которой люди должны говорить, а не используя этот односторонний подход в американской политике и как оно уничтожило американское и международное интересы и, в моем мнении, уничтожило безопасность всех иералийцев. И есть много иудов, которые верят в эту перспективу, и рabbин Нил Комос Даниэлс это будет выразить. Я также хочу прочитать что-то на конце панели от Даниеля Сокач, который является президентом Нового фонда Израиля в плане его перспективы на этот вопрос. Поэтому с этим я хотел бы представить нашу панель. Хасан Зенни является председателем Islamic Center в Северной Калифорнии и также Мусульманского Правительства, и он является панелей сегодня в Islamic Center, представляющим нашу центру. Санди Олайн, которая в charge United Methodist Church в Пасadena. И мы благодарны этому центру, потому что мы позволяем проводить наши пятницы пророков в Пасadena в центре. И реверн Гвин Габорд из Габорд Центра, который был здесь с центром, защитающим нас и являясь частью человеческой цепи защиты для мусульман и особенно для нашего Islamic Center. Мы так благодарны, что Гвин также сегодня с нами. Спасибо. С этим мы начнем с господина Хасана Зенни, а затем Гвин Габорд, а затем Нил, а затем Санди, а затем мы получим заключительные remarks после этого от нашего председателя, мисс Хидаб Тарифи. И здесь Нил. Дайте Нилу невероятное уважение. Нил, вы говорили о кр薬истах, и я думаю, что вам нужно кр薬исты, чтобы они могли получить пешку в Лос-Анджелес. Да. Или разделив Редд-Сей, чтобы он мог прийти.
Да, я думаю, это можно сделать в школах.
Мы рады, что рabbин Нил Комос Даниэлс, который также был частью нашей панели. И Нил, с 1991 года он первый пришел в центр, когда broke out war against Iraq, и мы создали вместе с Леобек Темпом, с Islamic Center и с All Saints Church религиозную коалицию против войны в Персидском Голф. Поэтому мы так благодарны всем, с этим мы хотим начать с господина Хасана Зенни.
Святым Богом, Самым Благословенным, Самым Миротворящим! Что я хотел бы сделать, с тем, сколько у меня времени, — я хотел бы отменить религиозные заявления о Иерусалиме, что в последней статье, о которой талам говорил, и многих других статьях, которые используются в христианском праве, евангельскохристианском праве, что это Бога обещает, и они поддерживают это, и это то, что они используют. Теперь, я не должен вам говорить исламическую перспективу о Иерусалиме. Я предполагаю, что все мы знаем, что это в сердце нашей идентичности как мусульманин, когда приезжает в Иерусалим. Поэтому я думаю, что это covered, я не должен его перечитывать. Но я хотел бы сфокусироваться на этом заявлении. И есть много verses в Библии и Второй Тестамент, что это обещание Ибрахаму. И мы слышим это много. И от политиков, так же как от религиозного права. Поэтому что наш ответ на это? Да, Бог обещал Ибрахаму, и поэтому что это означает? Это означает, что, как говорит христианское право, это принадлежит детям Израиля. Я думаю, я не буду первым, кто это подвергнет, но по крайней мере, давайте возвращаемся к намерению на этот вопрос. Ибрахаму было два сына: Исаак и Ишмайл. Теперь, когда мы говорим о десятке Ибрахама, было бы только Исаак или Ишмайл, или было бы и оба? И снова, я не подписываюсь на это, но я буду проходить этот процесс. Поэтому если это для descendants Ибрахама, это означает, что descendants Ибрахама в panoramic way encompasses both children, doesn't exclude. Второе, когда вы говорите о Исааке, Исаак не имел только Джекоба. Исаак имел три сына. Поэтому почему мы исключаем другие progeny двух сыновей Исаака, и мы просто сосредоточены на Бени Израиле, который является сыном Джекоба? Я имею в виду, это действительно базовые вопросы, которые не потребуют много для найти ответ, что означает, если мы верим в это религиозное, о чем я поговорю немного позже, это означает, что это может быть только одна линия, одна генетическая линия, но это должно быть оба сына Ибрахама, что includes всех людей, которые жили в этой области. Поэтому это будет одно. Я думаю, второе, что对我来说 более проблемно, — когда мы insist, и я говорю о мунутезах, о сынах Ибрахама, ибрахамской семье, мусульман, иудов и христиан. Что является общим основанием мунутезизма? Мы говорим, что Бог, вы можете идти в все наши книги, Второй Тестамент, Новый Тестамент и Коран, и вы найдете, Бог является Богом справедливости, Богом справедливости и справедливости, Он является Богом любви, и Он является Богом моря и близкости. Я прав? Поэтому несмотря на детали соглашения,信不信上帝 rest on Saturday or not, 信不信 Иисус был кр薥илен или нет, несмотря на это, идите над этим, и общее основание, которое дает нам связь, — один Создатель, не два-три Создателя, один Создатель, его действия очень ясные, никто не дебатирует. Вы смотрите на нас, мы все согласны. Как мы можем на одном конце нашего уха продвигать, что Он является Богом любви и справедливости и справедливости и близкости и моря? И затем на другом конце нашего уха мы advocating, что Бог выбрал одного группы людей, чтобы sideline другие группы людей, и затем они становятся собственниками важной цели. В моем humble opinion, это не подходит, что Бог, который мы понимаем, мы все согласны, Бог говорит нам, да, все вы sideline, только один из вас, этот участок, самый contentiousый участок земли принадлежит только этому группе. В моем humble opinion, это просто не подходит, это не подходит. Это сложно консультировать, и это проблематично. Я говорил earlier, что наши молодые мужчины и женщины, не только мусульманы, во всем мунутезе, во всей религии, действительно страдают от этого бичерения, которое происходит внутри религий, и они говорят, что не нужны. И мы задумываемся, почему мы теряем своих молодых мужчин и женщин. Вы продолжаете заявлять, что Бог это и это, но на земле это что-то другое? Это очень проблематично, мы должны всегда вернуться к большому образцу. Третий, который самый опасный из всех — когда вы используете текст, не важно, насколько вы в него верите, но вы теряете текст, вы двинетесь из религиозного域, из религиозного域, домена к политическому домену, и вы говорите, что это мой текст, это означает, что я должен его посмотреть на земле. Дайте мне сказать, что проблема здесь, я думаю, это очень опасный игра, которую играет. Кто будет держать, хиндры, буддисты или кто-то на этой земле, чтобы сказать, например, в Бурме, и доверьте мне, вы найдете что-то в тексте. Не волнуйтесь, что мы в творчестве. Нет, люди, просто посмотрите на все религии, на человечество, человечество очень творческое. Поэтому они будут взять что-то, и они сделают это подходит их политической агенте и их виду, их ближнего зрения. Поэтому они будут найти что-то, в Бурме они будут говорить, что это принадлежит буддистам, в Индии это принадлежит хиндрам, это будет disaster. Можете ли вы просто представить сейчас международный порядок, когда мы в 21-й веке, как талам нам reminded, что мы международно любим, международные церкви, международная комьюнити? Это реальное, сейчас есть международное тело, которое способно адресовать мир, в котором мы живем. Просто представьте, сейчас каждый группой придет и скажет, мой текст говорит мне, эта земля принадлежит мне только. Какое опасное игра, которую мы играем. Поэтому в общем, я просто хотел бы убедиться, когда мы идем к этому религиозному заявлению, что Бог обещал Ибрахаму, я думаю, что это не только имеет holes в нем, потому что сыны, о которых мы говорили, не только это проблематично, но я верю, что это опасно. Поэтому мы продолжим, спасибо.
Я очень жаль, что я прервал момент, но есть кто-то, который пытается уехать из парковки, и кто-то, у которого есть черный Toyota Prius 5PBJ, как пиво и чай. 5PBJ 487, пожалуйста, перейдите в машину. И снова, мы будем иметь микрофон для всех вас, чтобы комментировать и сделать предложения после нашей панели. И Гвин, вы следующий.
Мои братья и сестры, я говорю с вами сегодня как человек глубокого верования, как лидер внутреннего верования, как епископ. Это было позднее вечером в марте 2006 года, когда я стояла со своими коллегами, имам Жиход Турк, кто хорошо известен в Islamic Center, рabbин Стивен Юлиас Стайн, который был тогда с Темпом Уолшер, и диакон Эрик Стольц, вместе с более двадцать пилгромов, overlooking красивую городскую центру Иерусалима, далеко. Это было моим третьим разом здесь как лидер внутреннего верования, представляющим, ну, на самом деле, держащий все праздничные. Мы, все сыны Ибрахама,学习 вместе, пророков вместе, и планировали вместе за многие недели в подготовке к тому, чтобы быть там вместе, пророков, когда мы приехали в Holy City на пилгроме мира. Это был путешествие в течение жизни, возможность испытать это extraordinary место, holy для всех нас, через глаза и сердца священных традиций. Мы были granted special permission, чтобы прийти в Дом Северной Поверки и падать тихо вместе в москве на горе Темпона, где все наши ancestors пришли, через долгие столетия, для пророка. Мы поднялись по соседним ступеням к внешней стене на восточной стороне Темпона и испытали силу бесконечных пророков, проникающих в нити и различные камни в восточной стене. И да, мы тоже оставили заметки, bearing наш deepest longing for healing and justice and peace. Мы ходили по пути к кресту, trace Иисуса, верующих даже и до его смерти, чтобы показать нам дорогу к救贖 намерению, в любви, которая вечная и бесконечная. Там, на слегка и слепыми камнями, мой друг, мусульмский доктор, с слезами на губах, добренько взял мою руку, чтобы привлечь меня, когда мы оба плали на бдительной смерти Иисуса, ценной для обоих наших лиц. Я никогда не забуду его слова, потому что он сказал, что сейчас я понимаю, сейчас я понимаю. На тот же утро и позже, ближе к дну, наши иудовские коллеги начали нас делать ритуалы и пророки, welcoming дух Шабат, descending in mystery and wonder over the city, wrapping it and all of us in its ancient spell spanning from sunset to sunset. И это когда я наконец поняла, я поняла, что Иерусалим не принадлежит иудовам или палестинам или христианам. Это не наше отдать или отнять, город Бога это именно, город Бога. Это наше поделиться. Однако сегодня Иерусалим снова проблематичная городка, место, где мы действуем из арrogance и бдительности, manipulating, bullying и depressing each other, где надежда на небеса совпадает с земными полетами для силы, проникающие наши лучшие себя в беду. Too often, the city of peace, of shalom, becomes a city of war. Once more, this week, a man of temporal power has short-sightedly set in motion a course of disaster and death for his own gain. And so I speak to you today, because as a person of faith, I cannot be silent. My faith will not allow me to be silent where a moral wrong has been committed. What President Trump did in recognizing Jerusalem as the capital of Israel is wrong. It's pandering to his political base with a clear provocation of violence, a taunting invitation to terror and oppression and death. And that is why so many of the world's leaders have decried it. But he is not a man of peace or even, it seems, a man of reason. This is not good for the region. It's not good for the Palestinians or for the Jewish community. It is wrong, it is simply wrong. There is no right way to do a wrong thing. It destroys the credibility of the United States and dashes any role we might have in brokering a lasting peace. It elevates one faith, one people at the denigration and diminishment of the other, and that is always, always a formula for disaster. So what are we to do? First, as achingly impossible as it seems, we must, we simply must do whatever we can to resist meeting violence with violence. Let our rage be tempered with reason. We cannot, we must not react or simply polarize, for violence is a swamp filled with quicksand. That's a good line. Violence is a swamp filled with quicksand. Let us use the power, our rage, to pour life into our commitment to pray with our feet and our hands and our hearts, to link together with one another across our communities, to build a living force of unity that cannot, will not be broken or silenced. We must be seen, known, standing together in an unbreakable force for good. Then, let us speak out with all the courage we have on behalf of one another, even as Jesus did on behalf of the despicable Samaritans, for He turned His community on its ear in making their deplorable neighbors into the heroes of their stories, shaming those around Him in considering their humanity and becoming more humane in the process. Let us encourage our children, христиан и мусульман и иудов, to write letters in school to the children of the Holy Land, to give them hope in the knowledge that we are here with them, sharing in their suffering and praying for peace and goodness and justice for them. Let us ask our leaders and the multilayered communities from which we come, business, social, religious and political, to join in raising their voices with us in support of the people of goodwill across faiths, who decried this decision and who support peace. In summary, let us resist meeting violence with violence. Let us stand together where we can be seen as a force. Let us speak out for one another loudly and courageously. Let us encourage our children to support one another. Let us implore our leaders to speak out with us. And finally, let us pray again and again with our feet, by getting everyone we know, both locally and across this country, to register to vote and to vote. This struggle for Jerusalem is not a struggle for the ownership of land. It is much larger than that. It is about how we are going to treat one another, those who are like us and those who are different. We will follow the spirit at the heart of our faiths to love God and to show that love in a way, in the way that we treat our neighbors, with kindness and safety and justice and peace. Or we will use religion to abuse our neighbors and fall prey to those who seek only for themselves. The moment is now, let us act to restore. Jerusalem, salam, shalom, peace.
Спасибо большое, Гвин, за это insight и хорошее reminder, что Иерусалим означает для всех нас. Следующий является рabbин Нил Комос Даниэлс.
Мы в впечатлении и удивлении перед и внутри единства всех, от которого мы взглянем на наши мандаты, один из которых — искать справедливость. Когда мою congregation была first beginning, we rented space from an Episcopal church. Most of the time, we held our gatherings in the church basement, but when one of our young people became a bar or bat mitzvah, we gathered upstairs in the sanctuary. With the permission of the vestry, we carefully covered the large cross on the pulpit with a shroud, ignorant of the precise significance and symbolism of the altar, we used it for the reading of our Torah. We thought of the altar as a table, until the priest gently and diplomatically told us that the altar is also known as the Lord's Table and the Holy Table. The altar is the place from which offerings are made to God, and in a sense, it's not merely a symbol of God, but rather a place where God is, partaking in the offerings. The church altar then is no different than the altar of the Jewish people, first in the tabernacle in the desert and later in the temple in Jerusalem. It too was a place, a vehicle for bringing God close, so that God could partake in the offerings. Did you ever read the book or see the movie Contact by Carl Sagan? It's about the receiver stations that scan the universe, waiting to see if some message comes through in some sort of a pattern. The novel proposes that just such a signal is received, and when it is deciphered, the scientists realize it is the instructions for building a vehicle to contact the beings who sent the message. Quickly, they go about the construction of the machine after an intense and international and multi-religious discussion as to who should go on the ship to visit the other beings. The chosen few enter the ship, buckle themselves in, and the ground crew starts the vehicle. Those within feel as though they go on a journey and do indeed meet the other beings, the beings who sent the message, having what can be only described as a spiritual experience. And when they exit the ship and describe the experience, no one believes them, because the ship didn't move, it didn't go anywhere. The ship wasn't a ship at all, it was an altar, which, if created with both mechanical precision and spiritual intent, becomes a machine, a vehicle for contact with another place or an other or the other. Such an altar, such a mechanism becomes for those who believe it to be so, a way for them to touch something beyond and within themselves. The temple in Jerusalem was just such a vehicle for the Jewish people before it was destroyed first by the Babylonians and later by the Romans. While it is not my belief, for many reasons, for Orthodox practitioners of Judaism, the temple will be that vehicle again when it is rebuilt. And I understand all that such a vision on the part of my Orthodox brethren entails. And I need us all to realize at the same time, just how important and how powerful... And I understand all that such a vision on the part of my Orthodox brethren entails. And I need us all to realize at the same time just how important and how powerful that Orthodox dream is, how crisp and clear it is for some Jews. Even for me as a liberal Jew, I feel the power of Jerusalem. I know the history of my people there. I know that it is Ir Hakodesh. It is the holy city. I know it is Zion. It is Zion. I know it is Ir Shalom. I know it is the city of peace. I know that the Jews who fled Jerusalem during the Babylonian destruction of the city and the temple anthropomorphize the city and say, "How desolate the city sits that was full of people." She has become like a widow, once great among the nations. She weeps bitterly in the night. Her tears are on her cheeks. She has no comforter among all her lovers. All her friends have become unfaithful to her, and they have become her enemies. They also felt bereft because they felt as if God was gone from their midst because the temple was destroyed by the rivers of Babylon. There we lay down and wept as we thought of Zion. There, on the poplars, we hung up our lyres, for our captors asked us there for songs, our tormentors for amusement. "Go ahead, sing us one of those songs of Zion." How can we sing a song of the Lord on alien soil? "If I forget you, oh Jerusalem, let my right hand wither. Let my tongue stick to my palate. And if I cease to think of you, if I do not keep Jerusalem in memory even at my happiest hour." I know all this within my own Jewish world, and yet, I also know that I had one of the most amazing experiences of my life when I went to the Church of the Holy Sepulcher with a group of Jews, Muslims, and Christians, just like my friend Gwen did. A Catholic woman from our assembly, upon seeing the place where it is believed Jesus came down from the cross, fell to her knees there upon the stone of unction, the stone of anointing, and stayed there with her head down upon it for quite some time, while the rest of us surrounded her, bathed in the spiritual moment, knowing that she was in a holy place and a holy mindset and was no doubt in contact with divinity. I had a similar experience at the Al-Aqsa Mosque on the plaza of Al-Haram Al-Sharif, the noble sanctuary, known to Jews as the Temple Mount, Har Habaith, very simply translating the mountain of the house. Al-Aqsa, the farthest mosque, is the third holiest site in Islam. Mohammed was transported from the sacred mosque in Mecca to Al-Aqsa during the night journey. When I was there, in the days when Jews were allowed to enter, and I didn't have to get special permission, it was between prayer times, and there were so few people there that it seemed empty to me. Empty, until I felt the old faded prayer carpets speaking to me, speaking to me of the thousands upon thousands whose knees and heads had used them as an altar and thus been in contact with Allah, with their peoplehood and its values. I cannot and I will not dismiss any of these symbols like our president did this week. I have a wonderful teacher in my life, Rabbi Larry Hoffman, who once taught us that the phrase "merely symbolic" should be stricken from the English language, because things are either symbolic or they're not. And that's Jerusalem for all of us. They say that if you treat every problem like a nail waiting to be hit, your only tool becomes a hammer. Our president had the audacity this week to turn the holy city of Jerusalem, in all of its beauty and all of its complexity, into a nail, in the framework of his own political purposes, and then he smashed it with the hammer of his reckless and naive diplomacy. Let me conclude with a summary of a story that is taught by my colleagues Arthur Waschka and Phyllis Ocean Berman called "When Messiah Builds a Temple." To the little town of Tzfat above the Sea of Galilee, long ago, there came a Hasid that is a student also, visiting from Poland to see his rebbe. As the Hasid came into the shul, the synagogue, he saw the rebbe high on a makeshift ladder, painting a picture on the ceiling above the bima, the pulpit. "Rebbe, what is it that you are painting here on the bima?" "It looks like the dome of the children of Ishmael, the ones that they call Muslims, have built above the rock where Abraham bound Isaac." "That giant golden dome that they have built there, that was where the holy temple was." The rebbe's eyes turned inward. "Let me tell you a story. At the foot of the western wall, I have seen hundreds of thousands of Jews gathered, singing. 'The Messiah has come,' and they are singing and dancing as the great day dawns. I can see that it is Tisha B'Av, the day of mourning for our beloved temple, but there are no signs of mourning. I see Messiah speak a sentence to the crowds. I cannot hear the words, but I see that from His voice there stirs a river. I see a stream of Jews flow up the stairway that rises to the Temple Mount." The crowd cascades from the stairway onto the great stone pavement of the Temple Mount, and they look toward the other end of the mount, toward the great golden dome, the dome that covers the rock where Abraham bound his son for sacrifice, the dome, the rock where Mohammed leapt into heaven. Surrounding the dome are thousands of these children of Ishmael. They are not singing. They are shouting furious, stubborn, "Not here," they shout in unison, "not here! You will not tear down our holy mosque to build your Jewish temple." But I can hear the crowd of Jews muttering, whispering, "Yes, right here. This is the place. No doubt, no doubt, the ancient studies tell us, that is the place." And I know I'm running out of time, but I would summarize the summary. Here's what happens next. One of the Muslims starts shouting at the Messiah, who's standing in the middle of these two groups, looking at the Dome of the Rock with wonder in his eyes. And one of the Muslims throws a knife at him, and it falls short at his feet. And soon afterwards, a Jew comes out of the Jewish side of the crowd with a hatchet towards the Messiah, saying he can't do it. And another Jew just very quietly takes the hatchet away, while all the Muslims sort of surround the person with thrown the knife, and he melts into the crowd. And then all these knives and all these hatchets come flying from the group into the middle, forming a pile, and somebody lights them on fire. And then the rebbe and the Hasid talk about what happened. And they understand that the fire was an offering to God in exactly the right place and that maybe it isn't the Dome of the Rock that will be the temple for both Jews and Muslims someday. The Hasid says, "Maybe it'll be that space in between where the offering went up to God."
Thank you, Neil, for that enlightened and very creative analysis, and we really appreciate you being here with us today. And next is Reverend Sandy Owain, and she, I think, has spent a lot of time in Jerusalem and can give you some great insight. And it always, you know, it always reminds me that of the people who talk about the Middle East, and they say, "We've been there," how many have actually visited the Palestinian side? It's very rare you find journeys into the Middle East where they talk to Palestinians, whereas Sandy and many people like her have, and we look forward to her statements as well. Thank you, Sandy.
Well, my journey into this world of multi-faith reality began when I was a seminarian and with, beginning with Rabbi Wolf, young leaders, religious leaders, a group that was run by then the National Council of Christians and Jews. I was a Holman, United Methodist Churches Associate, when, in 1991, and was a part of that foundation for the first interfaith group against the Gulf War. It was out of that work in interfaith conversation, but also then in direct action for peace and justice, that my own call to go to Jerusalem came. And our denomination has a place there. We have had a position there since the First Intifada, when the heads of the Christian churches in the Holy Land said to all of us outside, saying, "You send millions of your people here every year on pilgrimage." And they run through this place as looking for a fantasy of a religious meaning and treat the background and the people here like it's simply a backdrop for their religious experience. And they don't hear the cries of Israelis or Palestinians or stop and worship with us as Palestinian Christians. So you need to do something better, because the road to peace involves all of us, because the city belongs to all of us. And so we began this position of the United Methodist Liaison in Jerusalem. I answered the call to that. I went first in 1995. Not the first time. I'd been there visiting a couple of times, but I moved there permanently in 1995 as a scholar-in-residence at the Tantor Ekim Medical Institute, which is on the south end of Jerusalem, between Jerusalem and Bethlehem. And then that, and called that my home then, as I took on that position in 1996 and stayed through 2006. So for 10 years, well, almost 12, Jerusalem and Bethlehem were my home. So I feel this conversation around Jerusalem in a very deep part of my heart, because I have so many years of experience, of personal experience, of in the city of joy and of deep sorrow. And so it's out of that, I want to just share with you a little bit first about just what the Christian position is. When a dog talked to me, she said, "You give us the Christian position." I laughed, I thought, "I wish I could give you that there was eight Christian positions on Jerusalem." But as you well know, there are many, as there are in many different traditions. And so there is not consensus. And those who see this movement that President Trump did this week, as has been mentioned by multiple speaker, as fulfilling, some fulfilling of God's will as a way to bring about the end times, as they understand it in their theological framework, are rejoicing. These are the people who are Trump's base, right? They understand this proclamation as a fulfillment of God's will, and they, while they are a minority within the larger Christian body, at this moment, they have managed to possess a great deal of power, not only in Washington, but also within state governments, and they wield enormous amounts of money. And so that the political framework in which they support and they purchase has put people in places of power that are supportive of this movement. On Friday, many of you may have seen that Republican State Senator Doug Drockson, who represents the Florida Panhandle in the state legislature, gave an introductory speech who welcomed Trump, President Trump, to Florida. Now, he's a conservative politician. He suggested that the president's controversial decision to move the U.S. Embassy in Israel from Tel Aviv to Jerusalem would usher in these biblical end times. And he said, "Now, I don't know about you, but when I heard about Jerusalem, where the King of Kings," and then there was a large applause, which is a way Christians refer to Jesus, "where our soon coming king is coming back to Jerusalem, it is because President Trump declared Jerusalem to be the capital of Israel." And there was rousing, cheering, and clapping across the assembly. Now, this is not new theology. If you go back, Grace Haskell's book on prophecy and politics was one of the very first ones that kind of looked at this emergence of this particular well, Indian dispensationalist theology that was this new in this sort of in the 20th century. And it gained hold under President Reagan, because he was also a bit of believing in that kind of theology. So for the first time, they actually began to move into the political power stream. And their political power's gone up and down with various presidents over time, but they have continued to expand their position and their power. And so that you see in this, and they desire war. They desire the destruction of the Al-Haram Al-Sharif, Al-Aqsa Mosque, because they see in that then that the temple would be, the third temple would be built. And I want you to know that this is not a benevolent theology towards the Jewish people, because in their theology, this Christ that they have imagined, when He comes back, He'll give the Jews an opportunity to convert yet again, and if they don't, well, they'll fry. This is the benevolent Jesus in their viewbook, okay? So just to be clear, this is not one that's in favor of the Jewish people over the Muslim people. It's against all people, because if you don't have their particular dispensationalist, you're done when Jesus comes back. So these people are promoting, promoting war, because they see it as helping literally God do God's job. That's a dangerous theology. And why, as I said, they are a minority of the numbers, they are a powerful representative. But let me give you a little bit of a quick synopsis of where Christian, mainline Christian communities have stood around the world in wholesale condemnation of President Trump's declaration. Now, first, the declaration came from the heads of churches themselves in the Holy Land. This represents the 13 different Christian bodies, which are various Orthodox, various Catholic traditions, and the Protestant traditions. And in their common voice, they wrote actually President Trump the day before the declaration, begging him basically not to make it, and said that the holy city can be shared and fully enjoyed once a political process helps liberate the hearts of all people that live within it from the conditions of conflict and destructiveness that they are experiencing. They begged him in peace, for peace, for the benefit of all people who value that city to not do what he did the next day. The World Council of Churches has a longstanding position on Jerusalem. Their statement on Jerusalem was entered by the National Assembly in Nairobi in 1975, which stressed that the tendency to minimize Jerusalem's importance for any of the three monotheistic religions should be avoided, that the destiny of Jerusalem should be viewed in terms of people, including Christians as well as Jews and Muslims, and not only in terms of crimes. So therefore, just as the future status of Jerusalem had to be considered part of the destiny of the Jewish people, so it cannot be considered in isolation for the destiny of the Palestinian people and thus should be determined within the general context of the settlement of the Middle East conflict in its totality. When the government of Israel annexed East Jerusalem in violation of international law, the World Council of Churches joined the international community and protested, declaring that that decision was contrary to all pertinent United Nations resolutions. It was dangerously undermining all efforts toward the just solution of Middle East problem and thus jeopardized regional and world peace. That was in August of 1980. The World Methodist Council, which represents the association of 80 Methodist-related denominations, of which I am a part, and represents over 80 million believers worldwide, also wrote that they were dismayed by Trump's announcement and dismissed decades of established American policy and international consensus, and that such a move undermines the peace-building efforts in the region between the two states. And we, as my own denomination here, as the United Methodist, have long supported this international consensus and have looked to international law as the best way, the best framework for us to find a solution to move forward for a lasting and just, durable peace in the Middle East that included a shared Jerusalem. We have our own sort of general declaration that says that Jerusalem is sacred to all children of Abraham, Jews, Muslims, and Christians. We have a vision of a shared Jerusalem as a city of peace and reconciliation, where indigenous Palestinians and Israelis can live as neighbors along with visitors and tourists, have access to holy sites, and exercise freedom of religious expression, and that the peaceful resolution of Jerusalem's status is critical to the success of the whole process of making a just and lasting peace between Palestinians and Israelis. Now, let me just close with a conversation about whether or not this is really a cataclysmic declaration or not, particularly in reference to the peace process. Now, I have to say that I have to agree with, there was an op-ed in the Washington Post on December 7th by Mariab Zanzine and Aziz Abu Sarah, Jewish-American who lived in Jerusalem and a Palestinian who now lives here, who's a Jerusalemite, said that from the ground, it doesn't look like Trump is breaking with U.S. policy, but rather authenticating it. And he can't kill the peace process, since it's been dead for a long time anyway. Trump's move, in fact, confirms everything we Israelis and Palestinians already know, have known for a while. And I have to say, I agree with them. Israel operates with Jerusalem as its capital. All of the government facilities are in West Jerusalem. They've done so for years. But they have also continued, as they access more and more of the East Jerusalem and the surrounding area, have changed its borders and boundaries, accessing more and more land declared, more and more areas that are around the city as part of the city, but drawing that with the most amount of land and the least amount of Palestinians in it, displacing as many Palestinians, whether they be Muslim or Christians, as possible within the city limits that they declare. This is not a new thing. This is not a new thing. In 1980, Israel enacted the Jerusalem Law, retroactively legalizing what it had already done de facto two weeks after the Six-Day War in June in 1967. It assumed sovereign control over about 44 square miles of land populated by Palestinians, much of it well beyond East Jerusalem and deep into the West Bank. Since then, Israel has continued to transfer now over 200,000 settlers beyond the green line, just around the Jerusalem area, creating the sense of this greater area of Jerusalem that Trump recognized as Israel's capital on Wednesday. Now, the United States has stood by and done nothing as Jewish Israelis have increasingly moved into the heart of Palestinian neighborhoods of East Jerusalem. Successive U.S. governments, one after another, have said nothing with any punch or with any kind of power. So Trump's announcement only confirms what Israelis already know, that there is no need or incentive to ever negotiate with Palestinians over Jerusalem because the U.S. doesn't care. You know, I lived in, my family I lived with in Bethlehem, the last five years I was there, I moved into Bethlehem during the Second Intifada because I kept getting stuck there because of the shelling going on, so I just moved in there to make it easier. But the family I lived with had their olive trees outside of Bethlehem. And they lost the access to their olive trees and their land because of the various permits and fences going on. The permits to go into the holy city have existed that have allowed, sorry, that prohibited Muslims and Christians' access to go into the city on high holy days. I remember Palm, my last Palm Sunday, and I'll close with this story. We were trying to take children from Bethlehem to go into the Palm Sunday Walk, many of which, in fact, none of which had ever been into the city, even though we are less than seven miles away from Jerusalem. The Israeli government uses the permits as a way of private attention between the Muslims and the Jews, or the Christians, because they will deny the Muslims to have permits at all to go to Haram al-Sharif for holy days. But they'll say, "Oh, we're going to give the Christians all these permits." So it looks like they're unfavorable treatment. But then once they don't tell the Muslim people that the Palestinian Christians get a permit per family, so one member gets one, a member, a member gets one, and well, people want to go to worship and go together as a family, so they end up basically not going. So we filled a bus up, and most of our parents didn't get to have permits. So I took a busload of Palestinian Christian children to Jerusalem for the first time because their parents couldn't go. And we walked down the Palm Sunday Road, and I will never forget, we came up over the hill and walked down, and one of the young boys, who's about eight, had the first view of the Haram al-Sharif. Now, this is a young Christian boy. And he just stopped, his eyes open wide, and he said, "Is that the Haram?" I said, "It is." And literally, he's like, "It's beautiful." I stood there and wept because I had to be the one to take him. And he was born seven miles away and had never seen it. Jerusalem belongs to all God's children, and we have to work until that is the case. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sandy. And now, we're going to have Chair of the Islamic Center of Southern California, Haddad Tarifi, provide perspective. We usually talk about Palestine and Jerusalem without having Palestinians. And I think this is an opportunity to hear directly from a Palestinian voice. And it also highlights the point that Sandy ended with, in that life for Palestinians in Jerusalem is very troubling, to say the least. It's difficult to get around, unemployment is escalating, there have been homes that have been demolished, and Israeli settlements have taken over. So we have really squeezed Palestinians out of Jerusalem as a result of U.S. policy. And again, we're in the 21st century, and we talk, we teach our kids about genocide and about human rights violations and about ethnic cleansing, yet we are seeing the slow ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people from their own land. And we are witnessing it before our own eyes. So I think that's something to also remember as we're talking about this issue of Jerusalem and in terms of what is happening to the Palestinian people with our tax dollars as Americans. So with that, we'd like to invite Haddad Tarifi.
Salaam alaikum. May God's peace and blessing be upon each and every one of you. I have to put a little bit of a disclaimer. I stand before you today not as the chair of the Islamic Center, but as myself, a Palestinian American. Thank you, Salaam. I really struggled as I was preparing. How do I squeeze 100 years of attempt to colonize and occupy Palestine in seven minutes? Do I talk about the history of the 70 years occupation of Palestine, displacement and suffering of the Palestinians? Or do I speak about my family's experience under Israeli occupation? Or the fact that I can't even go visit them in the place of my birth? Now, Jerusalem is on my mind. As a Palestinian, Jerusalem has the highest place in my heart. I have a personal connection to the city where my sister-in-law is from. Jerusalem is not just a place on a map. It is not a property to be sold or given. It is Balfour all over again. In 1917, during World War I, Arthur Balfour of the British Government, in his infamous statement, promised a national home for the Jewish people in Palestine. And now, in his irresponsible move, Trump declared Jerusalem as the capital of Israel. Balfour didn't have the right then, and Trump doesn't have the right now. God is not a real estate agent. God won't uproot people from their homeland to promise it to others. President Trump's decision not only breaks the 70 years of the U.S. policy, but it is a devastating blow to the prospect of a two-state solution for the Palestinian-Israeli conflict. It is a blunt dismissal of Palestinians' aspiration to have a state of their own. It denies 400,000 Palestinians living in East Jerusalem their right to the city they consider their own. This move is an illegal one on all counts. Israel claimed Jerusalem as the unified eternal capital of the Jewish people is weak and unsubstantiated. The United Nations partition plan in 1947, which divided Palestine into Jewish and Arab state, on which Israel declared its independence, this UN resolution maintained Jerusalem as an entity separate from either state. Israel occupied the western part of the city by force in 1948, and in a colonial approach using its military might, it captured the eastern part of the city by force in 1967. Throughout the so-called peace talks and for decades, the status of Jerusalem was unsettled and was to remain the same until the end as a part of a two-state solution in which the Palestinians will have their state. East Jerusalem is part of the Palestinian territory under the military occupation of Israel. Legally, it cannot be annexed. U.S. administration in the past called settlements in East Jerusalem illegal. What do you call now annexing the whole city? Even as we speak, the land Trump picked for the U.S. Embassy to be built on is a land annexed from Palestinians. What am I expecting to happen is the following. Israel will drive 400,000 Palestinians living in East Jerusalem out of the city, making them refugees in their own land, confiscating their land and property, replacing them with Jewish settlers. In a move that I suspect will lead to declaring Jerusalem a Jewish city and Israel a Jewish state. Thus, denying Palestinians, Muslims, and Christians alike access to the city and to their holy sites. All this will not only lead, but will solidify Israel as an apartheid state that it is. As if ethnic cleansing of the Palestinians in 1948, as documented by an Israeli Jew, Ilan Papi, in his book Ethnic Cleansing of the Palestinian, as if that is not enough. Now, phase two aims to uproot Palestinians in a move aiming to eliminate anything called Palestinians. Why am I painting an image that might seem gloomy to some? Well, it is the reality on the ground that makes it so real, possible, and bound to happen. Palestinians in East Jerusalem are not citizens. Israel gives them residency that can be revoked at any time and for no reason at all. Israel is already denying Palestinians permits to build on their own land. Israel is denying Palestinians permits to even fix their own properties. And of course, on a daily basis, Israel demolishes Palestinians' homes. Israel prevents Palestinians from accessing the water, their water. Israel diverts it to Israel, then sells it back to the Palestinians who can hardly afford basic daily needs. Again, why am I painting this picture? Because Israel doesn't care about the rest of the world. Israel has consistently ignored any resolution that called them on their illegal actions because the U.S. would use its veto power to block them. The UN Security Council has adopted a number of resolutions dating back 50 years, aimed in a part to prevent Israel from claiming sovereignty over the entire holy city. The following U.S. resolutions that I'm going to share with you were actually not blocked by the U.S., though Israel continued its illegal practice because the U.S. continued to fund it with my tax money and yours. In November 22nd, 1967, Resolution 242, Israel was told to withdraw forces from territories occupied in 1967 war, which included the eastern part of Jerusalem. On May 21st, 1968, Resolution 252, Israel was told to resend actions that tend to change the status of Jerusalem, including the expropriation of land and property. On March 1st, 1980, Resolution 465, Israel was warned to stop settlement constructions and to disband existing settlements in territories occupied in 1967 war, including Jerusalem. Such act, the resolution set amounted to, quote, "a flagrant violation of the Geneva Convention's protection of civilians in wartime." On August 20th, 1980, Resolution 478, Israel was censored for having enacted a law, which I know Sandy referred to it. Israel has enacted a law declaring a change in the status of Jerusalem, which constitute a violation of international law. Countries that have established diplomatic mission in the city were called upon to remove them. In October 12th, 1990, Resolution 672, during the First Intifada, or Palestinian uprising, Israel was called occupying power in Jerusalem and was condemned over the deaths of more than 20 Palestinians in violence at the holy sites that took place on October 8th. On September 28th, 1996, Resolution 1073, Israel was warned about archaeological tunneling near Jerusalem's holy site, revered by Jews as the Temple Mount and by Muslims as the Haram al-Sharif, the noble sanctuary. Palestinians were enraged at what they viewed as sacrilege. In October 7th, 2000, Resolution 1322, Israel was condemned over deadly violence arising from a visit to the Temple Mount by Ariel Sharon, who was then the Israeli opposition leader, which the resolution described as provocation that had led to the deaths of more than 80 Palestinians. On March 12th, 2002, Resolution 10397, both sides were called upon to halt violence and re-engage in peace talks with the goal of a two-state solution side by side within secure and recognized borders. The resolution called on both sides to adopt recommendation of fact-finding committee led by former Senator George Mitchell that included a freeze on Israeli settlements and cooperation to protect holy sites in Jerusalem and elsewhere. On December 23rd, 2016, Resolution 2334, Israel was condemned for settlement construction in occupied territories, including East Jerusalem. The settlement construction has no legal validity and constitutes a flagrant violation under the international law and a major obstacle to the achievement of the two-state solution. That's what the resolution said. How does this now impact you and me? As I mentioned, the peace talks are practically dead. Palestinians will not accept this decision. Demonstrations have already started throughout the West Bank, East Jerusalem, and Gaza. Palestinians are throwing rocks at Israeli soldiers where the soldiers are shooting tear gas and live ammunition. A new intifada has already begun. The whole world is standing on one side, and the U.S. is all by itself on another. If you travel abroad during this holiday season, you better be careful standing tall as an American. Because now you are in danger that one can only blame our president for. Oh, and by the way, it is not just President Trump to be blamed. Two days prior to the announcement, Minority Leader Chuck Schumer asked the president to declare it. Now, what can you and I do? First, I really feel very strong about supporting and continuing our interfaith talk and interfaith work standing for peace and justice, not just for the Palestinians, but for everybody. And I really encourage all of you to support both Palestinian and Israeli work on the ground, calling for peace and justice for all. It is not just about condemnation. We can condemn and then go back to our lives in a week or two as if nothing has happened. The world stood silent way too long while injustice to the Palestinians take place on a daily basis. It is time we all educate ourselves on Jerusalem, Palestine, and the Israeli occupation of Palestine. Everyone in the White House, from the president to the clerk putting stamps on envelopes, need to hear from us. Everyone on Capitol Hill, Republicans and Democrats alike, they should hear from us. Not once, but every day. We need to say it loud and clear that we refuse to be part of a modern-day Holocaust. Thanks and God bless.
Thank you, Haddad, for those words of admonition and concern over the great consequences of the decision of this administration on the issue of Jerusalem. We only have 15 minutes left, so we're going to go right to the audience right now with comments and suggestions, yes. And could you first wait for the microphone? And the microphone be held by Prima.
Oh, thank you.
And then, number two, stand up, and just state your name and if there's any affiliation.
Okay, my name is Samira Tabor. I happen to be an Episcopal.
I happen to be an Episcopalian. Two years ago, I traveled to Israel, not with any religious group. My husband and I and my sister and a close friend who happened to be Jewish went together. We could not go to the Temple Mount because the Muslims would not allow it. My husband, being a Muslim, could have gone, but he decided not to go, to stay with me. I speak Arabic fluently, so I decided I would talk to some of the Arabs. And what I'm telling you, I would like a comment from you as to what I experienced. That would be very helpful to me. So I spoke to the Arabs that were working in Jerusalem. We spent about 10 days in Jerusalem. And they worked in the hotel, they worked as taxi cab drivers, they worked in the food service, they were all over. And I decided to speak to them in Arabic. They were thrilled. "Oh, you're from Lebanon," and on and on and on. Not, I'm American. And so I wanted to know from their mouths how they were living, what their attitude was. I did not ask if they were Muslim or Christians, but it came out that it was a mixed group that I talked to. Some were Christians, some were Muslims. I wrote a paper on it because I just couldn't resist from what I learned from them. The bottom line was that the Christians were blaming the Muslims for their problems, the Muslims were blaming the Jews for their problems, and the Jews weren't making the differentiation between the Muslims and the Christians. So this was the bottom line. I was very, very disturbed from what I heard. The only time I felt unsafe in Israel, by the way, it started during the intifada with the knifings. We were there at that time and it was in full force. We did go to East Jerusalem and we walked around. That was the only time, being in Israel, in Jerusalem, that we felt a little bit uneasy. Men would come up and sort of brush closely against--
Okay, can you go ahead with your question?
Yeah. So I just want comments on this because what I experienced was very, very disturbing. And to me, making a capital of Jerusalem, which has been operating for several years now, doesn't seem to me that it will make a difference. What seems to me that will make a difference is attitude and mostly the Arab attitude.
I think the point is, is that moving the embassy to Jerusalem is not going to add to the problems there. The problems, I think, that she's alluding to are intrinsic, and this is not going to make much of a difference. And East Jerusalem is more dangerous than the other parts of the area. So for those especially who have traveled there, if you can comment, Sandy.
Well, first--
Yes, you're on.
Okay. The rulings over who can go up to the Haraam Shreef is not the Muslims. This was done as a part of the reality in how to control the access to the haram after various interactions with people and violent interactions. And so there has been, that was done in conjunction, actually, with Israeli security and who can go on and who can't go on. So it's a little broader and more complicated than just sort of making some broad sweep that the Muslims won't let you in. It's not, that's just not the reality. It's a much more complex situation than that. I do think the attitudes is true. And one of the things that's happened for Palestinian community, even as I was living in Bethlehem, you know, it's a, as population begins to shift, and the Palestinian Christian community has certainly immigrated at a higher rate than the Muslim population, partly because they have an easier time immigrating, but also they can, as, they have, can come to the West in some ways a little bit easier just because there's their sense of the overarching sort of Christian story, right? And so it's, so people take off and they have been, they have been in the diaspora for a long time, and so they have lots of places to go. But what's happened is you've broken down the social fabric of Palestine, which had been a very interfaith and a very, sort of, there was not distinctions between Muslims and Palestinians and Christians. But as the social fabric in Palestine has been worn away through the onslaught of occupation, you begin to see then the disruption. And so you do begin to see tension between Christian and Muslim Palestinians because they're looking at somebody, right, to blame and it's a degradation of the society. This actually, the remarks by Trump may offer an opportunity to have some of that come back together again, drawing people back to a common vision and a common reality. But I think a lot of that has to just do with the social fabric of what's going on right now.
Go ahead.
I think anytime you have a colonization power, that's what they do. When you want to colonize people, you interrupt the fabric, you go into the fabric, and you try to dismantle it. And this is what's happening. You have so many years and the colonization process is able to, because we're human beings, Palestinians are not, you know, but if you go beyond Palestinians, Christians, and Muslims, they were living side by side, but this is what colonization does. They know how to go into the social fabric, how to break it down, and how to pin people against people. And if I'm from Lebanon, I can assure you, even when you go to the, where there are Sunnis, you can break down the Sunnis and then you can pin them against each other. You can break down the Shia against each other. So this is a, this devil approach that people are able to use, and I think, I hope that helps.
Okay, we had a second question, Zaman.
This is in reference to Mr. Zinieh, who mentioned earlier the biblical, I think, quotation. I think, from my understanding, it's Genesis 17, 24 to 26, where God promises the progeny of Abraham. And by the way, Abraham didn't have two sons, but eight, one by Haggor, one by Sera, and six by Ketu. We shouldn't exclude those six.
Thank you.
But the argument here is that while God promises Abraham's progeny, all of them, the land between the two rivers, in Jeremiah 12, I think it is promised to the children of Israel. And I think it's very important to notice that if it is mentioned Israel, then it automatically precludes what was promised to Abraham. So in the context of God playing a real estate agent, I think there's a contradiction in Bible. So we have to assume whether we put the two verses together or not. But I think at the heart of the whole argument is that in neither of them, there is a prerequisite of religious belief for them to be qualified to own the land. In other words, that whether people believed in the earlier versions of whatever the tradition was, and whether they kept it or not, they would be entitled to it.
Okay.
So if Jerusalem was promised to the Jews, being Jewish is not part of it, and as they became Christians and subsequently as Muslims, they would still be entitled to it. And the Christians and the Muslims in Palestine did not fall from sky. They were the same children of Abraham.
I mean, I, I think, thank you for this addition. But the problem is you're dealing with, there's a contradiction, right? I mean, you have this and you have that. And I hoping today, I mean, with a little time, because what can we do really? And I think this is, that I hope that we can move into the little time. So I hope the questions can be presented. What can we do together now to be able to deal with this, this fiasco?
You have this gentleman here, Prima? Where's the microphone?
Hi, my name is Charles Chapman. Trying to look forward and be positive, if at all possible. I was wondering if President Trump's declaration necessarily precludes Jerusalem also becoming the capital of a Palestinian state, such that either the city is divided or the city is shared, but it is a dual capital, and people think that's realistic?
Well, first of all, several people have mentioned that's the reality on the ground anyway, is that Israel has been operating in West Jerusalem as if it's its capital. And for many years on and off, Palestinians have both operated and considered East Jerusalem to be their capital. So, you know, the question is, is, of course, getting that to happen. The problem is, is the way in which this president kind of makes those statements. You know, the Jewish community felt the brunt of this hammer of his on Holocaust Memorial Day, when he failed to mention the 6 million Jews, you know, who were killed in the Holocaust, and then said, "Well, you know, including everybody." You know, just like he said, there's, you know, good people on both sides, you know, good Nazis and whatever. So, and now he's very conveniently left the Palestinians out of the picture. And, you know, the problem, I mean, I do, I firmly, firmly believe that, well, I'll put it to you this way. I mean, there, I have many, many Muslim and Arab friends who are looking toward a one-state solution rather than a two-state solution in various forms. We have a one-state solution, it doesn't work. But a two-state solution is the only thing that will work. It will be difficult, it will be complex, it will be intricate, and it cannot be based on our spiritual texts, because you can get all kinds of contradictions in those things. It has to be a practical reality. It can work, it's the only thing that can work. And I think that we all have to believe that it's possible to make it happen.
Thank you. Okay, we have five minutes and two, now three questions. So 30 seconds, please, for each question.
There's no comment, so. My name is Nasser Karim, and I have a question. So President Trump made that unfortunate announcement, and my question is, why is it that this announcement will force the rest of the world? What if we, as a community, urged the rest of the world not to endorse his decision, and therefore only the US would move its embassy and everybody else wouldn't? Wouldn't that be a nice lesson for all of us?
All right, that's a good one. One person respond in one minute, please.
Well, the reality is, the rest of the world has already done that. I mean, every single world leader has condemned his statement. So, you know, and the reality is, it's going to take multiple years for that to happen anyway, because the, I'm not sure about the land that was offered, is to find the land to build the embassy and all that. We're not talking a quick, a quick turn. So there really was no reason for him to make it, but the world has already condemned that, so.
Okay. And then we had somebody back here? Oh, Perzana?
Salam, we have also on the side--
Yes, I got it.
Hi, Assamani. I have a question about the Netanyahu administration specifically. So anthropologists obviously have this, have this, this approach to culture called cultural relativism, but my question is about political relativism. Do you think that, well, first of all, Netanyahu's administration justifies many of its actions and correlates its very existence with Judaism and Jewish values. So in that light, do you think that Netanyahu's administration, the Israeli government, their actions, do you think that they should deserve to be afforded political relativism, or do you think that there is no lie there?
And then we have political science philosopher here.
You want to give a shot at that?
Go on.
Okay. Well, first of all, I think, I think you have to see Mr. Netanyahu very, very similar to Mr. Trump as a megalomaniac, and I think that, that really, you know, motivates much of his action. This is the second time around doing this, and I, I do have to say that many of us who are, what am I doing? I'm doing something here. Many of us who are outside of the orthodox perspective, and once you're outside the orthodox perspective, things loosen up considerably depending upon where you are. And I'm a reformed Jew by conviction and not by convenience. So, you know, my attitude is, is that many of the actions of the Israeli government are not very Jewish right now. I wouldn't call the, you know, the actions of somebody who, who stabs a security guard in the heart. A Palestinian is, you know, does that in the name of Islam to be very Muslim either. So, you know, these are, you can nuance this, and it is relative, it really is, but I have a tradition of what it is to be a Jewish state than Mr. Netanyahu.
Just to add to that, I think what we're seeing in the United States, as well as with the Netanyahu administration, is a representation of religious nationalism. It is white Christian nationalism here, it is Jewish nationalism in Israel. That is the threat to religion. It's not about religion, it's about power. And I think that's what we're seeing in those two countries. Last question, yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I just wondered what your, there was a moment of hope about a month ago, for most of us optimists, when thousands of Israeli, some Jewish and Palestinian women marched. What do you think is the chance of that population making a change in Israel's policy?
Where, in where?
In Israel.
In Israel's policy.
That's a wonderful question, ma'am, and I am with you. In spite of the gloomy picture that I, that I've drawn, just so that we are sort of aware of what could happen, we still have the power and the right not to make it happen. And that march and that work that Palestinians and Israelis are working on the ground to make peace happen, that is the work that we need to support.
What a great ending. I think you, Dad, said it right there, and I, I believe we are more in number than those who want to promote an exclusivist agenda. And so let us work together with the center, with the synagogues and the churches that believe in coexistence, in human rights and democracy, for both in mutual security and mutual recognition. I think there is more of us than there is of those who represent the other side of the other narrative. And, and there's a group called the New Israel Fund that we work with, J Street. We may disagree philosophically, we may disagree on the history, but we agree on the future. We cannot afford to allow those that continue to damage our interests, Israel's interests and the Palestinian interests, to dictate the terms. We have to dictate the terms. I think that is the message today, to work more closely together on this agenda. Thank you very much for joining us.
May I just have a quick question to the audience?
A quick, I mean, a quick question will not have a cancer.
No, 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 no.
That's the only problem. But if you, if you want to stay another five minutes, I'm happy to.
No, no, no.
I know we have to be also cognizant of the prayer, because we've delayed the prayer 30 minutes, so, but go ahead and--
Just how many of you believe this was a valuable get-together and you believe we should do more of it in the future?
Yay!
That's perfect. Yes, last question.
Next step, what do you suggest as a collective moment here? What's the next step?
Can I? Yeah. Yes, go ahead. Since you asked the last question, here's the last--
No, I was hoping somebody would ask that earlier, but thank you for asking. I think if you notice, a lot of us were not knowledgeable about what's happening right now. I think there is silver lining that we should be educated as quickly as possible. So the first step is really to know what's going on, to understand all the fits that are happening. And that's what I'm hoping the center can lead in the future, because you can't make decisions and move forward with closed eyes. You have to open your eyes and knowing what's going on. I think that should be our first step, is to be more educated and to learn and to understand the nuances.
I want to offer an observation, and that is that when I go to bed at night, I'm dealing with, after I've listened to almost all of MSNBC stuff, "Oh my God, we dealt with that today." And then when I wake up in the morning, it's like, what are we going to be dealing with today? I hate to admit it, but Trump has a genius for disrupting our train of thought and our being steadfast. If it isn't, well, if it's DACA, it's immigration. If it isn't immigration, it's ecology. If it isn't Jerusalem, it's Black Lives Matter. And so we're constantly in a state of compassion fatigue. And I think it's very important for us to stay very, very, very focused on this issue, to not lose sight-- to not lose sight and to not be swayed by his craziness. You know, I mean, what is it going to be tomorrow? One never knows what it's going to be. So let us covenant with each other to stay focused on this issue.
Thank you.